We will jump right into tonight's purpose and assign the rest to us to come together in a spirit of unity and communication and lead through a plan of action to make not only Greenspoint a better and safer place, but this city of Houston. Let's receive our brother Derek Muhammad and then we will receive Bishop Sheldon Brady for a word of prayer.
Greetings, my dear brothers and sisters. In the name of the one God, the beneficent, the merciful, I bear witness that regardless of language, land, mass, or label, that there is but one God. It's an honor, a privilege, and a pleasure to be here before you today, and please give yourselves a round of applause for being here. We don't want to belabor the point. We all know why we are here. We're here today, brothers and sisters, because the atmosphere in which we live as black people in this country is very painful right about now. We all saw the video of Stephon Clark shot down in Sacramento, California by law enforcement officers who decided that it was okay to fire 20 shots at an unarmed black man. An independent autopsyist stated that Stephon Clark was hit with eight shots, and six of them, he was shot in the back. And if this case goes the way 99% of the cases have gone in the past, we know that those officers will indeed be exonerated. Painful. Painful to watch. In Baton Rouge, Louisiana, they just fired a police officer, the one who shot and killed Alton Sterling. And a day later, they released the video where this police officer hopped out of the car and before Mr. Sterling could really do anything, put a gun to his head and told him, "I will blow your brains out, B." So they fired the officer for his misconduct. So it was good enough or bad enough for him to be fired, but not bad enough for him to be tried in the court of law. Why? Because the U.S. Attorney's Office had already sent down the decision that no one should be held accountable for the death of Alton Sterling. Painful. And here we are in Greenspoint, right down the street, not even a mile from here. Our brother Danny Ray Thomas, who obviously had a mental imbalance from traumatic experiences that he may have had in the past. He lost his way. It's obvious. And when a law enforcement officer came to him, encountered him, and in this encounter, Danny Ray Thomas ended up dead. Pain. Lots of pain. When asked about what it is that we should do, or that the White House should do, or the federal government should do, the press secretary of the White House looked at a reporter and as a spokesperson for the president, she called the shooting of Stephon Clark a local matter. A local matter. So it is clear that Washington DC has taken a hands-off approach to the issues. So the more hands-off they are when it comes to our issues, my brothers and sisters, the more hands-on that you and I have to be when it comes to our issues because in truth, we have everything in our community to solve our own problems. So the key word today is unity. You're looking at a Muslim brother speaking from a Christian rostrum. This is what it's going to take in order for us to solve our problems. So again, thank you so much for being here. I personally came to do more listening than speaking, and just give yourselves a round of applause. Let's get into it. Let's start. Let's come up with some solutions to solve our problems. Let's unite. Let's execute. Let's make our community a decent place to live. And the last thing I'll say is, we're just not going into the month of April. If things continue to go the way they're going right now, we're looking at a long, hot summer. So let's get in front of it and do what we must to make our community a decent place to live. Peace. Al salam aleik. Thank you.
The reason I wanted Brother Derek to open up with remarks because of the unique relationship between a Muslim and a Christian. But we've been able to impact the inner city in numerous ways because we put aside our differences and focus on the unity of our people. So tonight, let me lay the ground rules real quickly. We're not here to insult one another, to belittle one another, or attack one another. We're not even here to point fingers, but we're here to join hands and unite to make our city and our community a better place.
The pain is on my shoulder. So if you want to lift this pain on my shoulder, bring justice for my brother. Please, I am so begging you, and I shouldn't even be begging you because you already know what's right.
Let me let you know the family of Danny Thomas is here now. We're going to hear from them shortly. But before we hear from them, let me give an example of what it looks like when we come together. On Saturday, we had a festival outside in Harris County. Sheriff came and HPD came and participated and interacted with the community in a positive manner. And then our own Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee came and participated with the people, letting everyone know that we're all in this together. And every activity, every initiative that we've created here at the Greenhouse International Church has been done with the backing of Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee. So I wanted to now come give her remarks on this situation and what needs to be taken place for us to go forward. Let's receive her now. Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee.
And let me pass the mountain of appreciation to you, Pastor, for being beyond these walls. And I know that it's been done already, but let's give Pastor a very, very large applause. Let me acknowledge Minister Derek Muhammad for his leadership and the kind of violence that we stand against. Let me as well thank Sheriff Gonzalez for his quickness in coming to the conclusion. Let me not attribute to him conclusions of finality, but conclusions that this went very, very wrong. And I thank him for your leadership. And let me pause for a moment to the family. I'm so glad, I don't wish to intrude, but I was looking for them, but I wanted them to be at peace so that I could engage. My pain over Danny Ray Thomas's death, I've had to suffer alone. I want to now say to you that before you got here, the sheriff over and over again offered his deep sympathy. I'm offering it to you in hope that we will engage for what needs to be answers for you and justice for you. So I am here to offer my sympathy as I speak, did not want to speak further before I offered you my prayers and concerns, but also my fight with you for answers for the unjust pain. As I came here, there was a police chase, but at the same time, there was an article in the Chronicle that said an African-American young man graduated from Lamar High School, got into 18 schools, $260,000 worth of scholarships, and got into every single Ivy League that he applied, the single mom. Don't label our children, our black males, as criminals. Don't label them as dangerous, nor our girls, nor our brown boys and girls, or any boys and girls. But we must label them as children on one hand, and then as they grow up, if they need resources and mental health resources, or the family needs help, then we need to stand in the gap and provide those resources for them. That is a beloved community. That is a community that loves first and helps second and solves the problem third. Thank you, Pastor, so very much for allowing me and the ability to work with you, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Now, we're going to our last and next official we will hear from. Again, I want to make sure that the people, the people have a chance to voice themselves. We've been to several town meetings. I want you, the people have a chance to address tonight's panel. So we will hear from our representative, Joffrey Johnson, then we will go into the Thomas family. We will have a chance to share from their heart, and you, the community, will have a chance to ask any question that you desire to our panel.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Decker. Let me give Pastor Decker the fine work that he's been doing with Brother Derek. As he's already said, they put aside religious differences to make sure that we're coming together as a community. From a state of Texas standpoint, just last year, we passed a bill that would increase the amount of money that we give to police officers by $23 million to purchase bulletproof vests. The irony of that is, since 2005, the numbers from 2005 to 2015, the number of police officers killed in the line of duty was 49.5 police officers across the United States. 49.5 police officers were killed in the line of duty feloniously in the United States. Now, that doesn't say about the others that may have had accidents or gotten sick or whatever the case may be, but 49.5 were killed across the United States feloniously. In that same time, from 2006 to 2015, 129 police officers committed suicide. Why am I bringing that up? Because we understand that there is a mental health problem with our police officers. I'm not going to go back over with everything everybody else said up here. Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee was right on point. President Douglas was right on point. As we look at the issues, we have to start looking at not what's wrong with our community, but we have to start talking about what possibly is going wrong with the local law enforcement. I'm not here to knock them. They have one of the most stressful jobs there is. It is a known fact. If every single day, each and every one of us woke up and our wife, husband, son, or daughter said, "Please come back to me," that tells you, you may die today. None of us think like that. Even those of you who may be even in the past, we don't think that. We know God can call us at any time, but we're thinking that somebody is going to kill us today. That's a very stressful job, to be told that you are hated every single day because you had to show up for a crime, to be told that you are a pig, to be told that you are this and you are that. That's a stressful job. And so I say, it's time for us to start looking at what's going on with our police officers. Last year, I filed a bill called House Bill 625, and my staff, Nico Matthews, is going to pass it out to you. That bill simply says that we will biannually start looking at psychologically testing our police officers. Simply finding out, are they fit to do the job? I'm not trying to get nobody's job taken from them. But if you're having stress and if you're having trouble sleeping, or if you're having stress in your job every single day, maybe you just need to go talk to somebody. We can talk about diversity training all day long, but is diversity training going to deal with your stress and your mental health issue that you're dealing with? And so it's very important that we start looking at where our officers stand mentally as they come into our communities. Because somewhere along the line, and this is not a black or white issue, this is simply a mental health issue. Our police officers need to know that they have the support of the community. But instead of spending $23 million simply for a bulletproof vest, maybe that same $23 million need to be allocated towards the mental health issues. It needs to be allocated towards these officers being able to go and sit and talk to somebody. Because I didn't get into the other aspect of how many officers die from strokes, from heart attacks, from those other things because of the fact that officers have a sedentary job. And oftentimes, they have to eat on the run because they're not able to have a full course meal. They have to go to the fast food joints. We know the old adage and the old joke about eating doughnuts all day long. Well, the fact is, is that may be true because they got to drink coffee, eat doughnuts, try to get their sugar rush to stay awake because they're underpopulated, and so they have to oftentimes do two and three jobs, pull two and three shifts. So the issue then comes down to, how do we stop some of these killings that are happening in our neighborhoods? And why is it that young black boys and young black girls and young Hispanic boys and young Hispanic girls who are ones who are being killed simply for having a phone or a comb, or just simply being a threat? That means that we have to evaluate these officers. So we must do all of the other things that we talked about. We have to incorporate the after-school programs. We have to incorporate and teach our children how to approach or how to handle themselves. But we also have to talk about officers being able to handle themselves. So I hope that you guys will read House Bill 625. It didn't, we didn't get it passed. We were not able to get it through committee, but that does not mean that we won't try it again. We have to try it again. And this is again, no knock against police officers. I don't want any police officer to think that I'm going against them. I'm not. I'm actually looking out for you. When you almost, more than two times the number of police officers committing suicides that are being killed in the line of duty, we have our priorities mixed up. And so we have to tell the truth and shine the light on what truth is. Truth is that these officers need more of our support than we have to worry about putting a bulletproof vest on them. But we need to put something on their mind to help their mind so they can come back home to their wives and their husbands and their children. So with that being said, Pastor Decker, I will pass his mic back, but I hope that you guys take this back. And I want to make sure, everybody here, hear me, this is not anti-police officers. None of us are here being anti-police. This is being a pro-police officer support, but we want to make sure that they're doing their job to the very best of their ability without taking all their frustrations out on the community by which they're patrolling. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Now, you prayed for us. Now we want to hear from you.
Hello, my name is Keisha Thomas. I'm a community activist and organizer here in the Greenspoint area. I've lived over here for about four years, and I'm right here on North Grove. Two days before this shooting happened, I told a police officer that the sheriff was going to kill somebody here in Greenspoint. I told the police that. We have HPD, we have the sheriffs, the constables, and now Congresswoman, just like you were talking to Ferguson, the Highway Patrol have set up a trap right there on North Grove. And I watched them all day as he pulled people over, and I asked him, "Why are you doing this?" And he said, "Oh, if you're violating the state law of Texas." Okay, that's not why you're doing it, just like we talked about the money issue. When I can go to a police officer, an HPD police officer, I'm telling you that these sheriffs are out of control.
Police officers, they told us, 14 of them has been indicted or been charged. Is that for prostitution, or is that for something else? I want to know how many have been charged for shooting an unarmed black man in Houston, Texas, Harris County?
I was a prosecutor for three years and a criminal defense attorney for 22 years. There were a lot of people found that guilty, and there were a lot of blacks participating. But I've always, as an activist, gone around the community and asked us to participate in the system. If you haven't heard me say that, watch my Truth and Justice show. I'm still saying it, even though I'm a prosecutor, and I'm here to make sure the process is fair. But I cannot be the jury, the grand jury. I mean, this citizen belongs to the whole community. So we've got to participate fully, and I just want to encourage that. Let's continue to participate fully.
What is your protocol for using violence? As far, because I've always been told, you got to shoot to kill. So what exactly is your protocol when someone with their pants around their ankles, as from the video, no gun, walking towards you, push him down? What is your protocol?
Again, I said earlier, but I'll offer my condolences to the family. As I said, I know nothing. We'll bring back Mr. Thomas, but again, for myself and for the sheriff's office, we want to extend our condolences to the family. To your question, we have what's a continuum of force. So there's a range of options available to any responding law enforcement officer or deputy in our case, to where you start with the most minimal option, and you're supposed to meet only the amount of force necessary to meet what the other individual is acting towards you as an officer. So it could be just a mere presence to say, you know, Harris County Sheriff's Office Deputy, you know, I'm here, and that could calm the situation down. Two verbal commands, you know, hopefully to de-escalate a situation. You could use your hands, and you need to put hands on somebody in control. You could use intermediate weapons, which would be a taser, for example, and then it extends all the way up to ultimate use of force. So there's a number of options within that. The goal is always to preserve life, all life. That should be the priority all the time, and we teach, the focus should be to de-escalate a situation, not make it worse. And so that's what we...
Good afternoon. My name is Pamela White. I come to tell my story of Brandon Rags. But first, I want to thank God for giving me the strength to be here tonight. Then I want to thank Pastor Decker. I want to thank Brother Derek. I want to thank the No More Blood Share group for walking with me, for loving me, for supporting me, and being with me through this whole chapter of my life right now. And then I want to thank the board for listening to my story, okay? My son, Brandon, was shot in October of 2015 in the Greenspoint area. Philen, Philen's carrying a gun.
Pastor Decker, I want to thank you for having this meeting. You and I share a belief that the need for spiritual reawakening in Greenspoint is the biggest need of all. I'm very sorry for the tragic, tragic death, and I'm sure that all of the law enforcement people will have a renewed effort to avoid any kind of out-of-control policing.
Why does not a police officer or any type of person who wants to be involved in government, because it is your choice, and as a single mother with a grandmother that raised three children on a bare floor of an apartment with no furniture, when you say to us that we're, the police officers are stressed, they chose? Why don't they have to be cognitively examined first before they can carry a weapon?
It's one thing when you're going through the academy and you haven't seen anything. But when you've been on the street for five years and you've seen all of this, I can guarantee you, you're in a different mental state. Now, I talked to, not to sheriff, but I talked to a former sheriff. I talked to three or four police chiefs. They tell me they don't have money to retest. It costs about $200 a year. Is it $200 or $500, Sheriff?
Yeah, it's about $500.
About $500 a year to retest, and they don't have $500 a year. So my idea, to me, I know a sheriff, a police officer that's been on the street five, 10 years is not in the same state mentally that they were when they went through the academy.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but if I launch at an officer, wouldn't you suspect the bullet wounds to be somewhere in the front of the body? Well, his wasn't. His bullet wound came back here and back here. He was shot twice. Now, my son was 6'4". His name is Jeray Chapman, or was Jeray Chapman. Played football for Oklahoma State, and he was a big kid. So a lot of your officers are friends or big black men, and they don't care about their lives because they're afraid. Now, also, I have another son, and I don't know if it's you or the police chief, but which one was at one time the police chief in Austin?
That's the Plato.
That's who I thought it was. His police department is known for police brutality. And yet, our merit selected him to be here in HPD. 2016, my son, my younger son, was brutally beat up by Austin police. And you know why? Because he walked across the street, and they said he hit a service animal, which was a horse. And he didn't do that because there's video to show everything he did. He was kicked, punched, and put in jail for over 18 hours. And guess what? The case has been dismissed. So, and again, Brother Douglas, you stand education for our black men and women. I agree with you 100% because all of my kids went to college. And one is dead, and the other one was attacked by police. So it's not just because they're not educated, because mine's are educated and so am I. I worked for ExxonMobil for 32 years, and I don't have a police record, not at all. So when people want to say, "Education?", I applaud it. But that's not the reason why our kids are getting in trouble on me. That's not the reason why our kids are getting killed because they didn't go to school. And I do believe parents should be better at home in teaching and educating their kids because that's what I've done. Sister Lee, I've seen you many times at Fall Brook Church, and I've come and shook your hand every time. And I'm applauding you again because you are in the community, and I appreciate that.
Then, I've seen a lot with the police force being very aggressive. And you're talking to a person who made straight A's, graduated top 10% of my class. I was class president at Nemets High School at the time, went on to LSU. But that was hard in Greenspoint, dealing with the police force. Because it was hard for me to walk down the street some days or hang out in apartments because you're cooped up in a small apartment all day, and you want to hang outside with your friends. But the police force, they roll up on you, who got the drugs, shaking you down for no reason, just because we want to hang out. This is, that's the circumstance of living in apartments. And what I want to know is, why, why does it take for pastors to have an event to have police officers in the community showing that we're here and we care? And don't get me wrong, I've ran into a lot of great police officers. So I'm not for or against. I'm just, we need to find a common ground. Why, why don't you host events like the ones we saw here Saturday to show that you really care? Not just to be there and show face, but reach out, really reach out and be familiar with your community. Because if I'm familiar with a person, I know they have a mental disorder in the community. Everybody knows that in the community. But when the law enforcement comes in and has the main split, the second decisions, they don't know that. But if you're here on the weekends, when it's not Easter, or it's not a holiday, or somebody putting on an event, if you're out here just any given Saturday, if it's required by your force that patrols an area, that you have to outreach one weekend out the month, two weekends out the month. Just do it. Don't promote it. Just show up and show that you're here for the community. Get to know somebody.
Every day of my life, this was one of my worst nightmares because that was my brother. That was my heart. I sit every day on TV, every day, and you think, "I feel for this family. What can I do?" And all I could do was post and share, send my condolences. But when it happens to me, my worst nightmare, my world shattered. My brother was innocent. Do you hear me? Innocent. He was suffering like I suffer. We've been suffering our whole life. Do you hear me? Feel my pain? That was my world. My world. My world, do you hear me? He was taken from me by somebody else. He didn't die for natural causes. He was taken from me, ripped from me, my family, but more me, because we called each other twins. We walked through life together, heartache, pain, everything. I'm standing here by myself, I feel so empty, and I want justice for my brother. Don't let, don't sweep this under the rug, please don't. This is my life. I never thought I would be in this position, do you hear me? But now that I am, I got to fight for my brother. I got to fight for men like him that may come. This is my fight for him. I got his back. So I need for you to bring justice to my brother, if not for any other man, for my brother. Please, I'm begging you to your face. Give him justice. Don't let them sweep this under the rug, because you would not both know. The proof is in the video. He posed a horn. I know my brother, lover, not a fighter. What we fought for is to survive in this life, in this world, for people that want to harm us. Do you understand me? He posed no harm to anybody. He was taken from me by one of your people, your people. All my brother wanted was some help. Talk to him. Talk to him. What's going on with you, brother? Are you okay? Don't shoot him. You could have tased him. You could have restrained him. Put your arms around him, even if you didn't want it, didn't mean for it to be a hug, put your arms around him. He may have felt like it was a hug. Do you understand me? My brother is a lover, lover, posed no harm, but y'all robbed me. Y'all robbed my nieces and my nephews, do you understand? Every day I wake up, "No, you don't, you don't. Did you lose a child? Have you lost a brother or sister? You don't understand my pain, you don't. That's my life."
I think all of us have gone to great lengths to say that we're not against law enforcement, and I always put in my press releases, I take no backseat to my support for law enforcement from the federal. My committee heads the criminal justice system of the nation, all of the law enforcement, federal, and all of the state and local. But we have to take great pains to say this, so let me say it again. But your point is vital. As we have solutions, if we don't understand each other and know each other, and if we don't confront an important issue without being called the R-word, me calling a police officer R, or they calling me an R-word, and I think you know it's an ISM, then we're not going to solve this problem. The data shows that the people who are shot are African-American men. Number one. Number two, and I think these good people, the captain here, the sheriff, I think they're going to go back to their command, and they're going to sit down and try to address the question that you just made for Greenspoint. I haven't been to all of the stores, but I have been to one store. I almost got arrested in front of the store. We cannot have the siege. We want to get the drugs and the thugs and the gangs. Those are people that the neighbors call, your parents, your sisters and brothers, call police to help. We've got to get them to help the police solve the problems, but we should not say young boys can't come out and walk whatever street it is, or even stand in front of a store. Tell the owner of the store, "That's helping your business to a certain extent, they're out talking, they're hopefully not doing the gang stuff, they're just doing what you said you were doing, fraternizing." So we are just walking along the street, having the dignity and the constitutional right of the First Amendment, and that's what I'm pouring my heart out to. I want to see Sheriff Gonzalez, I know your heart, Chief Aceveda in your absence, the mayor of the city, whose heart I know, and many others. We've got to be able, let Houston be the role model for improving and increasing better police relations with the understanding that we cannot ignore the color factor. If we do that, we are fooling ourselves. So let me thank you for your success. Let me thank Brother Chatham for his story, and the mothers that have talked, and the families that are here. But my friends, if we are not serious about confronting that, all the goodwill, sheriff, district attorney, and others will not be answered. It's not all race, but that's a factor that we have to pierce and try to understand. And I just conclude on this number, all of the groups that want to out-support the police officers over me, they want to indicate that they're a much stronger supporter than I am, and will want to divide us by saying that they're a much greater supporter, and then you hear those people on Monday night, "They're all hating police." Let me ask them to come to my office, let me ask them to see me, let me see them in their face and say, "Who is going to claim greater advocacy and support? What basis do you challenge me and say that I am not in strong support of law enforcement? What is your basis?" And then I will respond to them about admiring them for their support and asking them to understand the pain of my community, and even me, who gave that talk to her son and still gives it to him as he goes out, because it is not a respect of station, status, income, neighborhood. And I know this mother, I'm going to end on this note, will not mind me saying, but one of the ones that lived, and maybe the only one, was a young man that was shot in Bel Air, Texas. His father was a baseball player, renowned and prominent. The car he was in was his, but they juxtaposed the numbers, and the officers traveled to his house and said he'd stolen the car. Parents came outside in pain and said, "He's our son, that's our car." They got pushed against the wall, a son, which we know what sons do for mothers. Stop doing that to my mother. As he was laying on the ground and he got shot, his career was ruined, he is alive, and he's one of the only ones in that kind of altercation that survived. His case was no built, and his civil case was thrown out. That's pain that people should try and understand, and we are never going to get anywhere unless people from different communities that don't look like me can confront this issue, both in their support for the police like I am, and we can see if we can work on that issue.